Yep, I can sure chime in. Actually, from talking with the principals, we would say about 95% of our staff is comfortable, ready to go with online learning, more than we even thought were using either Google Classroom. Google Classroom being the most popular as far as online learning. And actually, the module that was compiled from our tech department, Ron Moreland, who's in the Ed Services Department and he's kind of our educational services tech person, has, he is pushing out the first official module actually tonight to all of our teachers. And so it will help if you have a basic knowledge. He's going to put out some remedial things like, you know what, I just have a real basic knowledge, but I've never had to set up a classroom in Google Classroom. I may have participated, but I don't know how to set it up themselves. And one of the things that he's really working to do is to differentiate from somebody who's at a very low level. I don't know much to somebody who I've used this every day for the past two to four years with my kids. So that not everybody's taking the same training or getting, you know, so they can get some more skills if you need to. If you're at this place or if you're at a lower place, you can still get more skills for our kids. Does that answer your question?
Great. Yeah, I'm glad to hear that because I've just heard some people saying, I don't even know how to do this. And then I've, you know, heard people, oh, it's easy, you know. So there definitely is a learning curve and different skill levels, you know, from elementary all the way up to high school, I would assume.
Absolutely. And every single week, the online teaching and learning, something will be pushed out via Ron Moreland every single week, every single Sunday night for our teachers. And sometimes there'll be three options they have. Sometimes there'll be two. There may be one every once in a while, but we're trying to really give them options based on their skill level.
Super. Thank you.
And Sue, the only thing I could add would be that we are setting it up. They actually, we will actually collect the data on when they, when they complete those modules. So we will know, we will, I mean, it's a requirement and we'll be able to track that. So that's going to be helpful for us to make sure that we can respond to people based on the needs that they show from their professional implementation.
Good. Thank you.
Quick question. So since we are kind of moving into a more virtual online on some level, how are we doing as far as staffing? Do we have enough technology support to support all these needs from basic to advanced to classrooms to students? Is the tech part being supported as far as having enough staff on that level?
Matt, do you want to chime in as far as the teacher instruction piece?
Yeah, sure. So I would partially, I guess there's two pieces to tech support and online learning. There's the educational technology tech support, which Stephanie already mentioned. Kind of the strategy there is being kind of developing some modules that we can send out. And then certainly our staff is available for those types of questions. The second piece is more of the hardware-software type of support, which quite honestly is a little bit more challenging in a remote sense just because sometimes certain problems require hands-on just to kind of fix those things. But we're kind of working through that. So the short answer is, is that we're kind of utilizing our staff a little differently. But as of right now, I would not say that we need more staff. To be perfectly honest, depending on how long the closure continued on, probably my bigger worry is just what the summer looks like. The summer being kind of the time for projects. And if our staff is a little backed up because, you know, we haven't been, say, able to complete certain hardware repairs, like student Chromebook repairs, and that kind of eats into the summertime, that's kind of where I get a little bit more worried. But obviously, we'll, we'll see what happens in terms of, in terms of timing and then kind of do the best we can to juggle those things.
Thank you, Matt.
You bet.
Okay, is there anything further from board members on item C?
Shanley, one last thing. I did get it, and not to steal our airtime. Evan did get back to me, we are at 99%. And so we have 11 responses still out there. I know I have a number of emails I have not responded to, but we are at 162 out of, well, I shouldn't even did the math, or I shouldn't even put the numbers out because maybe my math is wrong. But it's 162 out of 800, 862 out of 873 responses. I know Jane is going to do the math real quick anyways. And so, but I believe my rudimentary math is 99%. So I'm prayerful. It's 98.7%, but I'm prayerful that I am right. So I'm looking at Jane's face. That's correct?
I didn't hear the bottom number. I heard 862, but I didn't hear the denominator. So I'm going to give you a clear path.
873. It's 873.
873. Well, I'm sure you're correct.
Just text me.
I'm not, I'm not figuring it out right now. I can barely figure out the technology to run this meeting, you guys. So come on.
You're good to go. You're good to go.
All right. Thanks, Kingsley. That was, you weren't stealing any time. That was perfect. So are there any other questions about personnel appointments and adjustments?
Well, this is Sue again, and I just was wondering. I had a question like for support staff, like the, the safety monitors and the PBIS people, what are they doing in this time?
Great question. I am pulling up their information right now. I mean, there's, I haven't pressed send yet just because I think you asked a couple of different questions. And so one, or just general support staff, and mainly I think about our paraeducators, they were focused primarily on getting up to date with Medicaid billing all of last week. That was a deadline that was supposed by me that they needed to get it done by Thursday. I'm still following up with a number of principals, staff, slash people today just to make sure like, hey, what happened? What's the plan? This week, we will move, we will be doing required Chapter 103 professional development. It's pretty intense professional development. And we will also be sharing with them potential modules that they can take as far as getting their para certification. And also, that adds a differential onto their pay as well if they're able to get certified. So we want to see what they can do during this time. They're also helping with the meal, not meal prep, but delivering meals. And there will be a number of other expectations that you'll see. I can make sure and share it with you that we have them do especially in the next two weeks as far as how they're supporting kind of our movement, moving forward.
Perfect.
This is Stacy. I'm sorry, Sue. This is Stacy. Kingsley, was one of the things, I don't know if see, that was what I heard Sue say, but about PBDA. And I do know that, that PBDA is still happening, right? Like that's one of the, that staff is all still doing their normal work.
I'll have Jane or Stephanie chime in on that.
So Stacy, I can, I can answer that. So those, those things will come to, we will be announcing those things as we get into that voluntary, the voluntary, the specific. So you are just 24 hours in advance. That is, you're okay. So yeah, that, those will be, we will be able to work forward with some, with some of the credit recovery. And so we'll be making those announcements tomorrow. So you are, you, that was a precursor.
I'm sorry. I just know a PBDA student. And so he was asking.
You are just fine. Absolutely fine.
All right. Third time's the charm. How are we on questions for the personnel appointments and adjustments? Is everybody? All right. Then all those in favor of approving the personnel appointments and adjustments, please signify by saying aye. India?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aster? Looking for the chat. Aster? Gotcha. Okay. And Lyle?
Yes.
Awesome. Nice to have you all on. And the chair votes aye. Are there any dissenting votes? I guess when you, if you guys dissent, you can just dissent when I call your name, I guess. But I assume there are none. So thank you. That motion carries. And that takes us then to item G, which is on page 49. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Education approve the purchase of 87 active panels from CDWG at a cost of $287,100 and three years of GoGuardian software at a cost of $43,633.33 per year.
Jesse, some more.
Sue.
Thank you, Jesse. I'm going to give you the first, and Sue, you're going to second. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to Matt O'Brien, our executive for Director of Technology, and can give us a little bit more background and kind of talk a little bit about where we are with this software purchase.
Yep, absolutely. So there's two parts to this proposal. The first part is software, as you mentioned. And that software is content filtering and classroom management software. So it probably would help to give a few definitions here. So content filtering is software that stops students from going to inappropriate websites or websites which could be a distraction to students, like game websites, things like that. When students are on our network, there's actually content filtering provided by our firewall. However, since our secondary students take their Chromebooks home, then we need to make sure that we have software on the Chromebooks that also provides filtering when they are outside of the district's network. So that's kind of that piece of software. Kind of two pieces of it both give some additional flexibility to people to do some filtering beyond what our firewall can do as well as make sure that students are filtered when they're at home. The second piece, or I guess the second definition, is classroom management software. And that software that gives teachers the ability to monitor student screens, lock screens, or apply their own content filtering policies, things like that. So it's really software that assists in the, kind of like it says, the management of the classroom for teachers. So it's software for teachers to interact and in some ways restrict or control or focus is maybe a better word, their students when they're using technologies. So at our middle and high schools, we've actually had software for content filtering as well as for classroom management. And that software has been from Lightspeed Systems. And quite frankly, we've been having quite a few issues with that. So we started looking, actually in late 2019, we started looking at alternatives. And actually looked at 11 alternative pieces of software out there. I think we covered pretty much the gamut of it. And through the end of that search, came to the conclusion that GoGuardian, which is the recommendation before you, would best meet our needs. So the proposal in front of you is actually for three years of service with GoGuardian software. And that service wouldn't begin until July. So it would correspond with our school year. It's not like it would run out in April when three years is up type of thing. So the other piece, I guess, is.
At Stifel Nicolaus, we've established.
The other piece that's worth mentioning is that our GoGuardian software will actually expand classroom management. Right now, our Lightspeed software I mentioned is what's being used at our secondary level. We don't have a solution in place right now at the elementary level. So this is not only a new software product, but it's an expansion. And that's based off of teacher feedback that we've heard at our elementary level from our elementary teachers and principals. So that is hopefully going to meet some of their needs moving forward as we're having enough licenses that we'll be able to accommodate them as well. The second piece of the proposal in front of you is a little bit more straightforward. It's Promethean Active Panels, which will be replacements for our aging Promethean boards, which were known as Active Boards at three of our middle schools, at Bonger, Hoover, and Carver Middle Schools. So our Promethean, original Promethean Active Boards are now, believe it or not, for those of us that have been around for a while, are nearing 12 years old. They're 11 and a half years old. They'll be 12 years old, our oldest ones this fall. So they're becoming more and more difficult for us to support. Quite honestly, it's become a big challenge. And this is something that we've been trying to phase in replacements. So we actually started a couple of years ago at the middle school level. So all three of these middle schools have had some of their Promethean Active Boards already replaced. So the proposal in front of you will allow us to finish replacing the Promethean Boards with new Active Panels this summer. And Active Panels are basically, the best way of thinking of them are huge 75-inch touchscreen TVs that are also smart TVs that have a number of apps both integrated in the TV or the teacher can hook their laptop up as well. So if the teacher's been used to using traditional software that came with Active Boards, which was known as Active Inspire, they can still hook their laptop up and use that. Or there's a number of new pieces of software that they can use actually independent of their laptop as well to just annotate on the board or stream video or functions such as that nature as well. So that's the proposal in front of you. Again, those 87 boards will basically allow us to finish off those middle schools, finish off those replacements. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Question, India. So where are we with high school?
We have not started high school or elementary yet. We started at middle school. Quite honestly, we started at middle school for a couple of reasons. One is they were a little further along with some other technology replacements when we started with them a couple of years ago. We also quite honestly started with, with middle schools because when we started this process, Central Middle School, their sixth grade was undergoing a remodeling. So it made sense to replace those boards as part of that remodeling process. And then we kind of caught up the other three middle school sixth grade. So that's how we started at sixth grade. This will finish those three middle schools. We have not started the process yet at high school or elementary. We've been kind of phasing that in as we've had money in our tech budget available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Stacy. So, and I think I understood from what you're saying, but I just want clarification. Like I was a Lego League coach, and we weren't able to access a lot of like the YouTube videos and that kind of stuff that we needed for our projects. Is this giving then, what you're saying, more flexibility to teachers to unlock those features that they wouldn't have been able to before?
So I'm sorry, Stacy, were you at the elementary level or the secondary level?
Hoover.
Okay, yeah. So yes and no. The way that really any filtering software works is that the building sets a policy and then the teacher can be more restrictive from that policy, but they can't be less restrictive from that policy. Two points that I would make though. One is that Dr. Mohorn and I recently had some conversations with principals and were working towards trying to move buildings towards a more open policy and made some success with that. Sometimes the instinct, which is understandable, is just when there's something new, we tend to err on the side of blocking. So we've been kind of having that conversation and kind of slowly opening that up. So I think that will help somewhat with that. The other thing I will say is that some of the limitations that we had with Lightspeed, there were a number of them. Lightspeed is our current software. It's just the way that it categorizes things made it difficult for schools to make decisions on what categories to block. We do think that the way that GoGuardian, the new replacement software that's proposed categorizes things will be a little bit more flexible in the way in the categories that schools choose to block. But ultimately, in terms of flexibility, the really any software, the school kind of sets a policy and then the teacher kind of can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive than that.
Thank you, Matt.
You bet.
I have one more question. I've heard of GoGuardian, but how long has it been in business?
GoGuardian, quite honestly, is kind of the industry staple. I don't know the number of years off the top of my head, but I know we actually first looked into them at least five years ago. And honestly, didn't go with them just because at that point, they just weren't competitive with some of the other offerings in terms of pricing. We did get some very competitive pricing from them this time around, which is why I feel more comfortable taking the proposal to you. I should also note that they're, like I said, they're kind of the gold standard. So there's a number of very large districts, down to very small districts that use them. In fact, New York City schools, I believe, which just did obviously a huge distance learning, remote learning rollout partnered with GoGuardian. And they're the largest school district in the nation, I believe. So that kind of gives you the picture of the player they are in the space that they're in.
So Matt, can you hear me?
I can.
How are the filter settings set? Who, who has the administrative authority to set the filter parameters?
So as I was kind of mentioning, but I guess I gave a kind of an incomplete answer to Stacy. It really is kind of a three-pronged system. So at the district level, we block across the board sites that were required to block by CIPA legislation. In other words, pornography or things of that nature. There are then settings that the school can put into place. So that's decided at the school administration level. And then lastly, with the classroom management software down to the classroom, the teacher can do that as well. And each level kind of works the way I described it to Stacy so that each level can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive. Obviously, we wouldn't want a teacher to accidentally open up, you know, a pornographic site or, you know, something of that nature. So that's the reason why it works that way.
Okay. Thank you.
But we could have the buildings be more open and then have grades or teachers decide to make it tighter so that those, when we do need to access that kind of information and teachers need to access it, it would be available for their classroom?
Absolutely. And I do want to say that, as I mentioned, we've really been pushing that particularly at high school. Dr. Mohorn and myself met with the high school principals just before spring break. So ironically, this was just before the closure ended up happening. But we met with both principals and kind of agreed on a much more open policy. There are still some categories that are blocked that we all agree just made sense to block. But it's much more open than it was earlier in the years. And that is absolutely a work in progress as well. But part of the point of that conversation was just making sure that while school does have some discretion there, we also want to make sure that a student at East has a similar experience as a student at West.
Matt, this is Sue. And hi. And I was just wanting to check if you could just give us kind of sort of an update uses, usage status on the Active Boards as far as, you know, they are 12 years old within the district, but, you know, they were a bit controversial when they came out. And so just as far as in the tech realm, if you, how you see they're being used in classrooms and usage staying consistent, higher, lower? I guess the value we see them in our district?
Yeah, so I'm going to answer the question slightly more generically because I think that's actually the point that you're getting at, Sue, is just, you know, classroom display technology. So in other words, a center display that all students look at as opposed to individual devices. Because there's a couple of different options within the classroom display kind of realm. There's both Active Panels or there's competitors of that, which are basically the big touchscreen TVs. And then there's also touchscreen, basically what are fancy LCD projectors. Regardless of which one you choose, I think it's, it's very, our experience in our district is very similar to conversations I've had with other tech directors at other districts in that even if you're going one-to-one with devices, you still need a centralized display for the teacher to be able to interact with their entire class with. So that's something that a couple of years ago, when we actually worked with some of our teachers in identifying kind of where we were going between, like I said, there's some, some different choices with, whether we would stick with Promethean and their Active Panels or whether we look at another brand or even a different product within that realm. That was conversations that we had with our teachers kind of at that point and just very consistent feedback that we got then. And it matches what we're seeing in the classroom as well that even if students are on their devices, there's something generally being used on the central display, whether that be the old Active Board or the new Active Panel in the classrooms that have those. So I think the controversy, I know the controversy that you're speaking of, Sue. And I think that that's definitely not the case any longer. I think if you were to ask teachers, the vast majority would indicate that they need some sort of display to interact with. So that controversy isn't really there. There's definitely a very strong use case for that, even though we've got more devices in the hands of students.
Awesome. Thank you.
Matt, sorry, it's Stacy again. Part of the reason, and I remember this because my kids were, you know, obviously in school and this happened. It wasn't always as much that we were using smart technology. It was the brand. So because of the price point, is there anything? Have you looked at anything that is compatible? That's less expensive, that does the same thing? Or is that not possible since we've already integrated the Promethean system everywhere?
So that's actually a really great question. And the answer is kind of yes to both, even though that seems contradictory. So let me elaborate a little bit. It honestly would be one of the reasons why our teachers, when we kind of trialed a few different technologies and we made the decision to stick with Promethean a few years ago, had decided or had really leaned that direction. And one of the reasons why we wanted to lean that direction is because it made that transition to a new technology easier for our teachers. So that way, if they had a bunch of what are called flip charts, which are basically the, it's like a PowerPoint, but it's created within the Active Studio software, they didn't have to redo all of that. So that was one of the reasons why we stuck with Promethean is it allowed us to make that transition easier for teachers. The price point conversation. So we actually looked at both competitors to Promethean as well as the other technology that I mentioned, which are the interactive LCD projectors. And in terms of the initial cost, the interactive LCD projectors are definitely cheaper. However, when you look at kind of the total cost of ownership that LCD projectors do have bulbs which have to be replaced. But more so than that, the installation cost of LCD projectors is quite a bit more, particularly when we're retrofitting classrooms because cabling basically has to be ran from the top of the ceiling down to where the teacher would actually connect as well as power cabling, which isn't at the ceiling right now. Where Active Panels, really none of that is necessary because the power cable will reach to where the existing power outlet is at now that our rooms all have power outlets near the center of the room for Promethean Boards. And teachers can plug directly into the side of the TV so there's no, you know, cabling that has to be ran. So when we did the math at that point, there was, it was almost the wash between, between those two technologies. Now that said, yes, Promethean is a little bit more on the pricey side. If you look at list costs, it's definitely quite a bit more on the pricey side. But we're also paying nowhere near list costs. We've got some really good pricing. So could we go out and buy something cheaper? Likely the initial purchase cost, we could get something a little cheaper for a similar size. Not a lot cheaper, maybe just a little bit cheaper. But then we would have some of, that would just be a much harder transition for our teachers. And quite honestly, since we've already done some grades within our middle schools, we really don't want to have a different product within middle schools. You asked earlier about high schools and also elementaries. That is something that we absolutely will have conversations and look at teachers when we actually look at our high schools and also our elementaries as far as what's actually needed. But at our middle school, since we've already started, it really doesn't, wouldn't make sense for us to shift to another product. But like I said, there's not really a huge cost difference. Sorry, that was a little long-winded answer.
No. That's great, Matt. Thank you.
You bet.
Matt, you have sticky tack on the door behind you. Do you have some kind of a nasty poster there that you had to remove?
That's funny, Lyle. It was actually a mirror. It was a full-length mirror that I took down when I was doing so many video conferences just because I thought that would be a little weird to have a mirror shining behind me that then showed like. that then showed like the monitor and everyone looking at me would get like a double reflection of one time.
Maybe I buy that.
Matt, you never know what we're going to ask you.
This is true, you know, I used to try to anticipate your questions and I, I've just learned to kind of go with the flow here.
It's clear, nothing is off the table.
Lyle, do you know that every single person on this call just collectively turned around to see what's behind them?
Yeah. Okay, Matt, I know we've had you on the hot seat for a while. I'm double checking with uh, anyone else uh, have questions for Mr. O'Brien this evening?
Can I have one last question quick, Matt?
Sure.
The question was, the technology will be, is quite different from the Career Center, right? Do they have Promethean more than Career Center? Did we decide on that?
Um, so you're talking about like the active panels or which, which piece of technology?
Uh, um, yes, the active panels. Do they have those at the Career Center?
Yeah, correct. That's, that's actually what we went with with the Career Center as well. Um, yep, that, that was our, our new standard at the Career Center as well, yes.
All right, anything further for Matt? All right, board, then I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote and just ask if you vote in favor of, or not in favor of, irnae, um, the technology purchase for the active panels and the GoGuardian software. So India?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Stacy?
Stacy says yes.
Aster? I think we may have lost.
Aye.
Oh, you're back.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, woo-hoo. Gotcha.
Yeah. Aye. Now, I don't, now, before you go to the, before you go to, I don't know how to mute myself again on my phone. It was star six to unmute. Matt, can you help?
You're fine. Just, just stay unmuted, that's not a problem.
Oh, I got a, I got a three-year-old.
Well. All right. You have a Rottweiler, it's fine, it's okay.
It's okay, somebody had a dog barking, the kids are just as good as a dog, Aster.
Don't worry about it, Aster, this is all, we're working through it, it's all fine. So, okay, Lyle, I think you did say aye, is that correct?
Did.
Thank you. Um, chair votes aye. Shanley, motion carries. Thanks again, Matt, we sure appreciate all your great work on that.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item eight, and this is on page fifty of our agenda. And the recommended motion here is that the Board of Directors of the Waterloo Community School District will levy property tax for fiscal year 2020, 2021 for the regular program adjustment as allowed under section two-five-seven-point-four code of Iowa.
Same move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, and I will, I'll, Michael, this is um, this is a pretty standard thing that we've done, this is a budget guarantee that the Iowa Association of School Boards has recommended that we do during this time of uncertainty regarding what our supplemental state may be, um, if changes have to occur within the state budget. So with that, Michael, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Um, this is a recommendation by the School Board Association and very strongly also by Larry Siegel. I've been listening to this for the last three or four or five weeks of every district doing this, and it seemed a little uh, unnecessary for us since we had an enrollment increase and we had a two-point-three percent SSA. So look at the, the one percent guarantee that is in the budget formula. If the SSA went to zero, we would be seventy-six thousand short of a one percent guarantee. So even in the enrollment increase we had, um, it would come into effect if the SSA went to zero. But it would also affect a lot of other districts, which would uh, raise property taxes to the prop, to the uh, to property tax across the board, and that is not a uh, favorable subject with this governor or legislator. So it seems very unlikely that it will happen, but it is possible. So um, this is our only chance to be able to do this and be able to recoup the, the one percent budget guarantee, uh, the legal option of what the law allows us to do. Um, so that's what we're doing as a safeguard, that's the recommendation, that every district do it across the state, because we uh, are still uh, have a possibility of the legislature coming back and doing some changing to the formula. But we're hoping this isn't the case, other than just uh, creating a safety net.
When, when you say zero, are you talking about the two-point-three going down to the zero, or the following year being zero?
No, the two-point-three going to zero, because that's next year. That's what this, that's what that law um, pertains.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Michael? All right, then seeing none, all of us in favor of approving the recommended motion for the budget guarantee for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. Um, again, I'll do a roll call vote. If you're in favor, aye, if not, nay. India?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aster?
Aye.
And Lyle?
Aye.
Shanley, votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you all. That takes us to our next item on the agenda, which is the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget certification and adoption. And this recommended motion is that the Board of Education certify and adapt the twenty-twenty, twenty-one budget with maximum expenditures of two-hundred-one-million-one-hundred-forty-thousand dollars and property tax levy rate of fourteen dollars, fourteen-point-two-zero-six-nine-four as presented.
One move, India.
Thank you, India, and a second?
Second, Sue.
Thank you, Sue, and discussion. Um, this was published, like I said, this was published in the, in the Courier, I did see it. And um, Michael, I can turn it over to you if anybody has further questions. You can all see the prior three years here as well.
One thing that I did want to clarify with that budget guarantee, that if that did happen, it would not change our tax levy rate, because we cannot change it even because of that. So what it would do is it would um, allow for the cash reserve to be reduced, but we would levy in property tax that would keep our authority whole. Uh, so it would just be a exchange of amounts. Uh, we would stay at fourteen dollars and twenty cents as we have published. We cannot increase that uh, after the fact of after publishing it. So it would just mean that we would raise the money in a different form, uh, rather than um, raising the property tax. So that cannot happen.
Thank you for that clarification, Michael. Does anyone else have questions? I just want to state again that, you know, consistently, it's in our exhibit, but I just want to say again that our water property tax rate has consistently been near the lowest of the UEN districts. Um, I'm very proud of that, and the fact that we have been able to either drop it or stay flat um, for the past, I believe it's eight years, is something I think that we should be very proud of as a district, that we've been fiscally responsible with our knowledge, as well as providing a lot of this world experience or education for our kids.
And this is Sue, I would add to that, that even with um, everything going on to create turmoil, um, we are staying within our budget and keeping taxes consistent, as you said, Shanley, so I think it's very commendable.
Anything else? All right, then once again, I will call for a roll call to, a roll call vote to um, approve the budget certification and adoption. India?
Aye.
Jesse?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Aster?
Aye.
Lyle?
Aye.
Shanley, votes aye. Motion carried. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda then is item J, and this is on page fifty-eight. And the recommended motion, oh, actually, this isn't a motion, this is just a, for information only, so apologize there. Um, but I can obviously let both Kingsley and Michael give a little bit more information regarding this addendum um, for the current Durham School Services contract.
Absolutely. Um, so if you go to page fifty-nine of your packet, uh, what we really wanted to highlight was the information that we had discussed at our last board meeting, and in particular section two-B, calls out, um, if the district cancels any work to inclement weather, um, dot-dot-dot, or emergency situation, the district agrees to pay a sum equal to fifty percent of the daily charges for each day work is canceled. Last board meeting to increase that to an additional thirty-two percent to ensure that employees um, were, were covered um, under that amount. The reason why we did so at the time was the expectation that we would potentially resume um, school on April thirteenth. Since then, the government provided guidance that um, has given us the opportunity to move forward online learning, and that, that feeling is not necessarily there anymore. Um, that not necessarily um, come back to school. Now, I know there's still uh, additional conversation with Governor Lindman, and obviously, Governor Lindman has not come back with that information, but um, we have had, we do have the opportunity to move forward online learning, and that's a clear change from where we were before when we initially came to you just last week. So, so with that, um, and with the backdrop of what I presented to you was actually the, the text of the language in the law around the new stimulus bill that got um, approved uh, earlier last week, um, HR seven forty-eight. And in particular, it speaks to section eighteen-zero-zero-six, which talks about local education agencies shall, to the greatest extent practicable, continue to pay employees and contractors during this period of any disruptions or closures related to the coronavirus. So as you know, Dr. Lindman has already um, come to you for approval on paying um, many of our um, all of our hourly workers for straight time. This is a contractor that had explicitly stated in the contract that they would um, that it would be fifty percent and not any additional to that. When we thought that we were going to continue, that just sound like a broken record, but I want to make sure I'm clear, when we thought that we were going to continue on April thirteenth, we wanted to make sure that we were ready to go as of April thirteenth. Again, with that, with the change in that information, um, we're, we're recommending that we not um, adhere to the contract, um, the fifty percent moving forward, um, or um, to your prerogative, wait until um, potentially April sixteenth, where the governor provide additional guidance on whether or not school um, will resume. So I'll leave it up to you, I wanted to just kind of share that brief introduction slash background as far as um, where we're at and let, and see if you have any questions and really wanting to hear your discussion.
So when?
How long does it take for the drivers to apply for unemployment?
I'm not clear on how long it takes. I will say that just in my research around it and knowing some people that have actually had to apply for unemployment, um, it is a pretty... I want to preface this by saying that this is a difficult situation for many to go into unemployment, but I'm speaking primarily just to the process. The process is pretty quick, as far as how to apply for um, the process, apply for unemployment, excuse me.
So are they being paid for the next few days or not? That ended on October or April twelfth, right?
That ended on April twelfth, correct, or April tenth. So um, they, we are currently in a period where they are not being paid the additional, they're not fully being paid with the additional twenty, um, I think twenty, thirty-two percent that we had asked for um, at a previous board meeting.
So if, if the, you think there's going to be an announcement on the sixteenth?
That is what I'm hearing. Dr. Lindman, if you want to chime in on, on that?
Um, actually, I haven't heard a date, but I think the reason that, that Kingsley and others are mentioning that date is because at a previous press conference, uh, Governor Reynolds did say that she would, to the extent possible, give us two weeks. And so April sixteenth would be two weeks ahead of April thirtieth. So that's, that is a guess. She never guaranteed two weeks, but she did say that she would attempt to give two weeks notice. So that's where that date is coming from.
So in the event that uh, it looks like school's going to start up on uh, first of May, do we continue to pay the thirty-two percent for the next two weeks, or don't?
That's why we wanted to, that's why we wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I mean, my understanding is, what we're saying, if it's canceled for the year, we're not going to pay any more thirty-two percent, is that right?
That's correct.
But if it, if it isn't, if it looks like it's going to start up May first, then we've got these two weeks of gap. And we haven't committed to paying for. Correct.
How long, I'm sorry, this is Stacy. Sorry.
This is Aster, but we're still, but we're still paying the fifty percent within those two weeks, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our, it wouldn't necessarily be a gap.
I mean, it's a gap in drivers' pay, drivers getting paid.
I don't understand that. So, and I may, I missed it because my internet went out, sorry. But the thirty-two percent... I don't always hear a question, is it for one again? The thirty-two percent cover, and the comp hit is at fifty percent?
Fifty percent, which is the, 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 the,
the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, the, leases, additional maintenance costs and things along those lines.
What it doesn't, what isn't in there is their overhead. I can't remember the, the approximate number of what that was, but that's, whatever's left of eighty, eighty-two percent, that's the overhead that we would not be, uh, we would not be paying.
Okay, so when, I'm just noticed on the, uh, second page, on page sixty, that um, the term agreement ends, it goes through July thirty-first of twenty nineteen, and this is renewable, obviously, we're past that time. So is that something they will possibly have to renegotiate and ask for more in the future? I just feel like that number thirty-two percent is arbitrary to ask for, again, different time, um, different moment than when we first signed this, but I don't know, would, thirty-two percent just seems like a really weird number to ask for?
Thirty-two percent was around, again, covering um, full pay for all their employees and covering um, those maintenance costs and the lease agreements and things along those lines. You know, if, if they want to negotiate for something else in a, a new contract, they certainly can.
do not fulfill the whole, the 174 days that are in our contract, because they are going to provide busing for us for 174 days. If any of those days don't get fulfilled, then there, the, Durham is saying, well, we need you to pay something for those because we're building our budget and we're planning, we're planning for that money coming in. So we, they're saying, you've got to pay us something for any days that you are below the 174 threshold. And the number that they set was 50%. So let's say that we only had 170 days, so we pay them their normal, their normal contract for 170 days. Because we were under the 174 day agreement, for those remaining four days, we owe them 50% of what they were expecting to make had we had school. So when we brought this to you before, Durham was thinking, well, because we're under that amount, if you only pay us 50%, that's not enough to cover our actual costs. So we said, well, what is the actual cost that you're going to need to keep those drivers paid and keep them on contract? That amount was 82%. So they asked us, so, so 82% of what we would normally pay on a day, right? So, because part of that is profit, so if we paid 100%, then, you know, part of that goes to profit and part of it, so 82% is what they said, well, that's what it really costs. So we were on the hook for 50% as per our contract. We agreed for the duration of those two weeks to pay the additional 32% above and beyond what our contract said, because it allowed us to keep that door open for our bus drivers. So we said, you're right, it's a price to pay to make sure that we're keeping that contract and we're keeping, because then the bus drivers are getting paid, they're staying on contract, they're not going anywhere. So I don't know, so it's really not about the 32%, it's about the 50 plus the 32%, which is the actual cost. I don't, does that help?
Yeah, so either way, we, we're not going above and beyond out of our budget. We already have it budgeted, no matter what. Got it, correct? Got it.
Okay. That's correct, yes. And actually, it's a little bit less, because we were planning on paying those days times 100% of what we had normally been paying. So that's what we're budgeting.
Okay, so that was the confusion.
At Stifel Nicolaus, we've established ourselves as one of the nation's leading brokerage and investment banking firms. Our success is based on a century-old tradition of trust, understanding, and solid, studied advice.
I would just say, and that was the confusion that I didn't understand, where were we getting this extra money from if we, it just seemed out of pocket. So knowing that we were going to have this money and we were going to pay it anyway at some point, that makes a little bit smaller sense than saying that we're going to pay $20,000 a day, and like, where are we getting this money from? Where, where do we always set up and have this money? So if we already had the money, and we're going to pay it, that's a little more clear. Thank you.
If COVID-19 wouldn't have come, we would have been paying 100% of what, of what we were anticipating to pay, 100% of what was budgeted. So we're only paying 82%, so we're not expending the whole amount, but we're, we could have not paid the 100%, we could have not paid the 82, we could have paid the 50, because that's what our contract calls for.
Can I clarify, Aster, that the question you're asking though is how the board feels about the next, going from the 13th through the 30th? You're asking for us to elitmus test to say, are we comfortable paying 50? Are we comfortable paying 82? Because we don't want to lose those drivers in the meantime. That's what, that's what your question is to the board, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Stacy, and I don't know if maybe Kingsley or Michael would have a better understanding of this. With this stimulus bill going through, I don't know how long all that was supposed to take and how long unemployment, but would these bus drivers be able to receive funds during those two weeks, or would it be way too long for them to even try to bother with it?
Say that, say, what, these, these upcoming two weeks or three weeks?
Right. Would, you know, like, okay, when, when Dier goes on shutdown, they have to, if, if they have a shutdown in the middle of the year, the employees go on unemployment right away, right? And so I don't know if that's something that can happen with the bus drivers, that during the two weeks that we're talking about, can they get unemployment? And would they also be able to get the, what is it, an extra $600 a week through the stimulus package?
I can't speak specifically, you know, obviously, to what their specific situation is. That is my general understanding. And that was also one of the arguments that we discussed, as far, you know, the situation here is, in a sense, it is different, but not different from the summer. So the expectation is when we end our 174 days, they go through that same process. Now, I'm not sure about, you know, whether or not they, that's, that's probably, I don't know about whether or not they actually apply for unemployment, they may have jobs over the summer, I didn't want to speak to that because I don't know, but that would be the exact same scenario, we would be, and now access the fact that we are kind of in this uncertain, well, no, are we continuing, or are we going, are we coming back to school or not? And so there's, you're, you're correct in maybe using Dier or other organizations that at times, at times, especially with Durham, there is times where they lay their employees off after our contract is, our contract is up, and then rehire them in the, in fall.
But right now, there's no authority to pay the additional 32% to keep those on staff for today or tomorrow, or anytime in the future.
Correct. There is no authority to pay them. The, the, part of the reason why we were okay with bringing this discussion item first, rather than an actual board agenda item, is because even at the time, if you remember from our last board meeting, that we had shared with you the information to pay the 32%. To your point, India, additional 32%, but 32% within the contract, 32%. Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, they had not submitted their bills at that time, even December. Is that correct?
That is right. They hadn't been paid for them yet, because there are discrepancies in December, we had that one, but the other bills were late, and the, the amount that was on your board list tonight of about 1.6 million, that brought them up to date, except for a few discrepancies, but those were actual routes that were driven, and we owed them full price. But it also included 82% for the two weeks at the end of March. They just billed us for the two weeks we missed as of March 31st, so we will have another 82% for the first two weeks in April. But, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions to this, and I know, I, we believe the, the normal status is when the school year is over, Durham lays off their drivers. So they're, they normally go to unemployment during that time, so it's not an unusual thing. But the issue about the $600, again, one of those foggy areas that if you're only a part-time worker, I don't think you're getting an extra $600 a week. It would be prorated, so it's really hard to throw around exact numbers of how the bus drivers would be treated, but it appears that the unemployment benefits are better under the stimulus package than what they would have gotten normally. And really, what we're kind of looking at is saying, if we are going to be done with school this year, if we know that this Thursday, there's no reason to consider 82% for the rest of the year. So we're just kind of putting everybody on notice of saying, we need to know something from the governor, how we're going to actually attend or not attend school before we consider paying the premium amount to keep their drivers on hand.
This is Sue, and Michael, I think that it was a very wise point, because with the unemployment, we, we just need to direct them to Durham, and hopefully, they're getting direction from Durham and giving, getting good wisdom from Durham, and, and we really, they are a contracted employee, and, and we really have no say over any of that. So I think it's better to direct to the source of where their payment is coming from.
In a survey from other districts and the UEN districts, and Havenport was one of them, that did not pay above the premium for Durham, even as of the middle of March. So there are other districts that have been waiting to see whether, whether they're going to be going to school anymore this year or not, or they make a decision. So Durham is waiting for answers from other districts as well. So for us to wait a little while to see what's happening with the direction, I believe is not going to be out of line for what Durham can function under.
Can I ask, since, you know, as of Monday today, the morning went to online, what was their decision about their busing, or is it totally different? What do they have, Durham?
They have Durham, and they have, they have made no decision as of just a few days ago, unless anybody has heard Jane or Marty or Kingsley have heard anything additional to that. But I was in communication with their CFO, and they were wondering what we did, because they were still trying to figure out what they were going to do for the rest of the year.
All right, Kingsley, Michael, do you need any more feedback from us? Or I think what you're hearing, or what I'd like to present coming forward from the board is that we really need to wait, and I agree with that, Sue, I think you said it, and Mike, seconding Michael, just in that, not in an actual motion, but just in that, we really need to wait and see whether we're going back to school, and also use the full resource that Durham has, and how they, how they recruit their employees, et cetera. All right. Well, this may be, we may be talking about this in two weeks, I think we'll know a lot more by the end of the week, let's hope. So with that, I will turn it over now to Jane, Dr. Lindman, for her superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. Sure. Okay. So just a couple things, I'm, I'm going to yield most of my time to talk about the voluntary continuous learning plan. There was some pretty decent coverage on that. Andrew Wynn did a, did an article in The Courier yesterday, and so I know that that has been circulating a little bit. We also did a phone call to families to just share a little bit more. So I just wanted to kind of maybe outline a few things. This is more just for the general public, because we actually have a emails that are going out, or communication that is going out tomorrow to families, that will provide a lot more details. But just, just in a nutshell, let me just talk about it tonight, right now. First of all, as we go forward, I know that most of the public knows that there is a difference between districts could choose voluntary or they could choose required. We are going with voluntary, but I just want, there's, there's some stipulations around that. First of all, the expectation is that students do participate. So the, when we say voluntary, it really has to do with, there's a couple of bells and whistles that we are not necessarily prepared to be able to do, what, if you go with required, the state has laid out several requirements that you must do. So we don't, we have a few things that we have to work out in order to even be able to go to required at this point in time. So voluntary just means that you don't have to check every single box, but voluntary does not mean you do it or not if you want to, for, for families, anyway. For families, expectation is that students would participate. So with that, because the plan that we're doing does count for the district's required days and hours, it, it's, it's real school. This is real school, participation is required. So just, so with that knowledge, that expectation is, the expectation is that students would participate, let me just go through a couple of things that we will be doing. So first of all, for students in grades in PK, K, and 1, and again, parents are going to get information tomorrow, but just a precursor here, students who are in pre-K, K, and 1, their learning will actually be done via a paper and pencil packet. And there is a really good reason for that. So first of all, if we're going to go online, students, we have to have some vehicle to be able to push that information out to students. Students are, are, our youngest learners in pre-K or pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, and first grade do not have accounts with us. They don't have accounts that we could push out, internet accounts, Google accounts. So we can't really push out information to them, we can't track their, their information via technology. So that's why we're going with the paper pencil packets for them, but that still is sort of the same thing, it's just more of a low-tech. So they will complete packets, they will still, the, the teachers will still meet with them, they'll still talk with them, they'll call them on the phone, the parents will have an opportunity to turn those packets in for scoring with feedback, and the parents will still be, I'm sorry, the teachers will still really be tracking that per child. In students in grades 2 through 12, those students, we're, we're going online with them with an option to do the paper and pencil, but the, the default is the online. And so we will be pushing out the weekly assignments, and, and although we'll, we'll stagger the work throughout the week, we're actually going to push them all out at one time on Sunday evening, so that when, when kids wake up in the morning on Mondays, they can look in their Google account, the assignments will be there, as will the support from the teachers. And, and teachers will support that all, all week long. So for example, Monday is kind of literacy day, and so the teachers who are teaching literacy will bring their calls with the parent or with the, with the students, they'll be doing some Zoom meetings on Mondays, and then Tuesday is math, Wednesday is, is science, Thursday is social studies. That doesn't mean that kids will only do literacy on Mondays. It means that Monday will be the content teaching day. It's also the day that all literacy teachers will be available, that we have something called office hours, and so the, the teachers will be making themselves, making themselves available all week with a special focus on Mondays being for literacy questions, Tuesdays being math questions. And again, that's just a general rule. If, if a child has, gets to Thursday and they're working on an assignment and they have a question and the teacher's checking with them, they can ask it at any point in time, but there's just kind of a structure that we're, we're trying to set forth. So they'll, the assignments will be pushed out on Sunday. All week long, we'll, we'll have students bringing up those assignments, working with them. If a student doesn't log on, then they can expect that they will get a phone call from the teacher, and then, you know, they'll, they can get the packet in front of them. If they're not online, then it might sound like this, you know, can you turn to your pack, when we call them, you know, can you turn to your packet, turn to page 12, talk with me about a couple of the problems, what did you get for number five? So it may look like that, a combination of online and, and those, those phone calls, maybe a lower-tech option. So this plan really does include a, a nice requirement, I guess, to, to be tracking participation and documenting scores, even though it's not going to be official grades, we will be tracking who is participating, we will be tracking whether it's online or paper pencil or by phone calls. We're going to be documenting scores, we're going to be documenting progress, official grades, because that's what, that's what comes with the required, and we're not, we don't meet all of the guidelines quite yet to be able to do in required, we're, we're trying to check those boxes to make sure that that option would become available at some point in time. But, so that's kind of what we're working on with that, but, but they will be, please know, they will very much be tracking participation, documenting scores. I've mentioned before that I've got two boys of my own, boys of my own, and I know that they will be logging in and doing that work, because it's, it's going to be required. So I think the reason that we are going to do so much tracking with this is because it really does allow us to gather data that we will, that we will need to determine, you know, if, if we can get all of the bells and whistles in place for the required, to go to actually required, we'll have a lot of data to, to be able to use as we go in, into that. So we have to assure that we're meeting certain requirements, and then I'm going to have to sign off with those at the state level. So we're just, we're going to be tracking the data, finding out what percentage of kids are, are participating. Right now, probably the best, the best examples we have of the levels of participation are really coming out of the Waterloo Career Center, because at this point in time... if, if we can get all of the bells and whistles in place for the required, uh, to go to actually required. We'll have a lot of data to, to be able to use as we go in, into that. So we have to assure that we're meeting certain requirements and then I'm going to have to sign off with those on, at the state level. So we're just, we're going to be tracking the data, finding out what percentage of kids are, are, are participating. Um, right now, probably the best, the best examples we have of the levels of participation are really coming out of the Waterloo Career Center because at this point in time, not just in the enrichment where we just offer, offer opportunities, they're actually in full-scale teachings. So they are doing required, required teaching, required learning, required participation at the Waterloo Career Center. And so we've been spending quite a bit of time on tracking, tracking that data. We know that we have almost 600 kids. Um, right now, the number, the percentage of students who are actually logging in to the required, um, lessons, doing their work, turning it back in, all of that is lower than where we need it to be. So the teachers are working very hard through a variety of, of avenues to, um, to reach the students, but we're not there yet. And so we're, we, we are using what those teachers are learning. Um, we know that we have about 85% of the students who have replied and have participated at least once. But they really do need to participate on an ongoing process in order to actually pass the class. Once or twice, you know, if they log in once every other week or once every three weeks, that's, that's not going to be enough to pass the class. And so that's what we're really tracking right now. Um, and, and we'll be applying that forward and not only, you know, I think two weeks from now or three weeks from now, not only will we have data from the Waterloo Career Center participation, but we'll have data at kindergarten and first grade and second grade and all the way up. So, um, I think those are really good things. And I guess just the last thing I would say is our voluntary plan really has four big, big rocks. First of all, we'll be focusing on the essential standards. With online learning, you just don't, you just won't get through as much content as we would if the students were sitting in front of us. So we have really tried to prioritize what are those must know standards that kids need to have. And so they've identified those. Um, so that's the first big rock. That we're really focusing on the essential work that will help them get ready for next fall so that they come back with fewer, fewer gaps. So essential standards. The second piece of this plan is really in the, in the category of accountability and tracking. So that we know which students are doing things. If a student doesn't log in, then that doesn't exempt us from connecting with them because the content is required and, and they have to know that because if they're going to go on to the next grade, they've got to know that. So accountability and tracking is rock number two. The third rock is feedback. So we need to be able to connect with students to make sure that they get feedback on how they're doing, um, what's right, what's wrong, how to fix it, what, what, um, what thinking might not be there yet. So that's the third piece. And then the fourth big rock of this is really how we will meet the needs of, of students in special populations, whether that's students with IEPs, whether that's students who have English language learning needs, um, students who need some extension things through gifted and talented. Um, so really, really looking at that. So I'll just repeat them one more time. Focusing on essential standards, focusing on accountability and tracking, focusing on feedback and then focusing on meeting the needs of students in special populations. So that's what the public can expect through our voluntary plan. Um, Dr. Mohorn has, has often said the comment, really, it looks very, very similar to required. It's just not in the cap, the camp of required because we haven't yet been able to check off every single box about, uh, some of the certain requirements that are, are mandated from the state level in order to say you are doing required learning. So it'll look very similar to required and we're going to, we're going to know a lot more about how things are going in the next two weeks. So, um, that was just, I, I appreciate the opportunity to just give you a, a little glimpse of, of what kind of things our public is going to hear. Starting with, um, you know, we really worked on with teachers and, and staff today. And tomorrow we go, you know, more public with this to the families. So that's just a little glimpse of what's coming. And that, with that, I will stop. That's a lot of information. Thank you, Shanley.
Jane, can you, there's a question in the chat box. Can you, regarding high school credit?
Yep, absolutely. So right now, because we are not doing, um, because we are not actually doing required, we, we cannot offer credits. And so we will be adjusting graduation requirements. We will be adjusting credits and all of that based on the fact that we cannot yet, we actually are not allowed, if you do the voluntary plan, you actually cannot give credits except for in one exception. You can give credits for credit recovery. So if we have students who are working on recovering credits that they may have not, uh, earned due to some other reason, we can still issue those. There are a couple other, um, I don't want to say loopholes because that makes it sound, you know, shady and I don't mean that. But there are a couple other exceptions that, that we are working on that we might be able to move forward. If we can get to the point where we could offer required either full scale or even with, you know, a couple of grades or high school or whatever we can do, at that point you can offer credits. So right now, no, they cannot get credits with the exception of that one, uh, allowance, which is, is credit recovery. And then after that, if we can gear up for required, then yes.
Uh, I have a question, two questions.
Um, it's India.
That's India. Uh, what if parents don't hear from a teacher? There's no, there's no contact with teacher.
Yep. So we are, we are tracking that. We will be able to see who is contacting whom. So that's, that's our checks and balances on our end. They will be tracking students' grades and, and the principals can look at that. We can look at that. So we can do that. But I guess I would say to a parent, if we get to Thursday or Friday or at any point in time and they feel like they are not getting the contact that they need with their teachers, they should just call the school number and leave a message because those messages are being contacted, being checked every single day. Or email directly to the teacher or directly to the, to the principal. So let us know if, if for whatever reason you're not getting the contact that you need or the assistance that you need. Just, we are, we are open. We are open for business and so people should just call us. They can call the, um, there's a 433-2020 number. They can call that number. They can call the, the child's building, the school building, or they can email anybody and we are answering all of those.
My second question was, I'm just trying to clarify, they're not introducing any new material as far as the teachers, correct?
Um, they, they are, they are. So when we couldn't introduce, the way the law read, we could not introduce new materials up until April 13th. So starting right now, we can, we can introduce new materials because that's the difference. Because these hours are actually counting for that, that 1080 or the district's required hour. So yes, we can introduce new content at this point. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Jane, I think there's another question in the chat.
Okay. Um, so many kids are working. Yeah, they're, okay. So the question is really about GPA. And so, um, there, so if a student, there's, there's, we're trying to hold kids harmless throughout this whole process, but I would tell you there are some little tricky, there's some tricky pieces of that. So maybe the best example I can say, so right now, the way the law reads, we are, we are, we had to stop quarter three grades. I'll get to your question, Stacy. I'm going to get to it through the back door here. So this is an example. So for, for right now, if, if in third quarter, because we stopped six days from the end of third quarter, we actually were not allowed to modify grades or to allow them to turn in, um, assignments, et cetera. So we couldn't go back and say, well, gosh, you missed these three assignments. So you have, let's say that a kid had a D. I mean, I'm just going to say, let's say a kid had a D. At that point in time, they couldn't even, the, the way the law reads, we couldn't even go in and allow them to make up assignments in order to raise their grade. A lot of students really wanted to if they were saying, hey, gosh, I was just, you know, I had assignments. I wanted to turn them in to raise my grade. So we are working on a way to be able to do that for, to, to, to let kids actually have some, um, autonomy and some, um, flexibility on their GPA. So the, the state for the, the colleges are also offering that same flexibility. So they are, at the end of the, at the end of the semester, at the high school level, they are giving some opportunities to kids to even, they'll wait to see what their grade is. They can either change it, they can A, change it to pass fail. They can actually, um, let's see, there, they can take an incomplete. There's like two or three options that they could do that would increase their GPA. So we are very aware of what this means for grades. And for students, we, we want to make sure that we are not getting in, um, that we're not holding the kids accountable for that or that we're not disadvantaging the kids because of that. But right now, there's some, we're trying to work through what the law allows and what the, the law does not allow. Um, yeah, I see, you know, one of the comments is what if my kid was at 89% and we really wanted to allow them to, to do something? They, we, we're, we're working through what that means and what they can do. Again, you know, if a kid had a C or a D and they wanted to do something, we're trying to see what we could do. Uh, we actually just looked, there's one district that is actually advocating that districts would lobby the Department of Ed to be able to, um, get a little more flexibility. And that, we, we will do that, but right now the law doesn't allow that. We can still, we can lobby that. We can ask if we want to do so that kids are not disadvantaged. What other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, Jane. Appreciate that. Okay, um, then we can move on to comments from board members. And I can't remember who I started with on the sixth, so I'm going to start with India tonight.
Oh, I don't think I have anything. I thought I have a lot, but I have no idea where you want to begin. So I'm going to pass.
Okay, if you think of something, you just raise your paw and let me know. We'll be good. All right, um, Jessie?
Yeah, any idea how, I know our outdoor facilities at large have been closed off. And we had a whole lot of issues with, uh, you know, congregations there that we don't need at this time, you might know.
I actually have not heard that, Jessie. I, I'm, I'm going to look on the positive side and say that if I haven't heard about it, then maybe it isn't an issue. Kingsley just weighed in and said no. So I have not heard of any, uh, significant issues.
Okay.
I talked to Dan Huff earlier this week and asked him how things were going in that regard. And he said it had been very smooth with people not abusing, you know, the space that was still open. He thought it was going very well.
That's good. Uh, it's always, you know, it's like, we got some open areas that we can't do much with and, you know, just, you know, make sure everybody's trying to follow the state and federal guidelines here to always go back to our normals. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
All right, Stacy?
Okay, I just wanted to say that I am super excited by the number of people that watch, watch board meetings now that we're doing it electronically and it's live streamed. Like my sister, she's like, yeah, I was on Facebook and I saw the meetings. I saw and watched it. So, um, I just think that's great. We were voted in by people who wanted representation and if they can watch what's going on and participate, um, by giving their feedback. And, um, it just makes the whole system work. So thank you to everyone watching and feel free to let us know what you think.
Thanks, Stacy. Aster? I'll give you a second to unmute.
You got me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, over the past couple of weeks, um, I had the opportunity to be involved in a few, um, Zoom meetings, uh, through the district's coaching academy. Um, and on, it was three different sessions. On the second of April, Marcus Newsome, the track coach, head track coach and AD at Wortburg, uh, did a Zoom meeting. On the seventh, I didn't get a chance, but I did speak with Ms. Jaden Spencer, um, former West High standout, uh, University of Alabama softball player. Uh, she did her Zoom meeting on April 7th, I believe, and then on the ninth. Uh, JJ Moses, standout East High Iowa State alum, uh, who's the former, uh, player development, uh, personnel at the Houston Texans of the NFL. Um, so three different, uh, individuals. Uh, on the ninth, there was a total of over, there were over 45 coaches that joined, uh, that Zoom meeting. So want to give a huge shout out to, and thank you, uh, to the district AD, Dan Huff, and the athletic department. Um, there was so much information shared, uh, all, well, the two that I seen, and I know, uh, Ms. Spencer did an excellent job as well. Um, a lot of information, a lot of insight, um, all the coaches and athletic directors were engaged. Um, it was just an awesome time. So, and I look forward to seeing, um, some of the feedback, uh, that we received and share be implemented in the near future, uh, for our district on the athletic portion. So huge shout out to Mr. Dan Huff and the whole athletic department for, uh, putting that together. And I, I've talked to a few coaches since then, um, and everybody echoed the same sentiments. It was just, it was awesome. It was an awesome time. So thanks to the athletic department of the district.
Yeah, those are three pretty amazing athletes, Aster. Wow. So.
It was, it was, it was more than what, and I think a few people mentioned it, it was more than what we expected. It was, it was absolutely amazing. And I've heard, um, Marcus and JJ speak before, uh, Newsome and JJ Moses speak before. And like I said, I, uh, met with, um, James Spencer, um, through a mentoring program through you and I, uh, their athletic, uh, program. But they were, it was, it was better than it has advertised. It was, it was amazing. So, and I know a lot, uh, all the coaches got something out of it. And the athletic directors. So it was awesome.
Excellent. Thank you, Aster. Anything else there? Did I cut you off?
That's it.
Okay.
Nope, no, you're fine. That's it.
Lyle?
Uh, yeah. Um, I sense that we're probably not on the same page regarding the upcoming work session on elementary, uh, reading. In fact, I'm pretty sure we're not. So let me be very clear as to where I'm at. I'm interested in more detail on the proposed, uh, uh, recommendation. But I'm not interested in just a more glitzy, uh, more eloquent, uh, presentation of the same. What I'm really interested in is a new recommendation. One that does not have a whole, uh, uh, a whole, what am I saying, concept. Uh, uh, you know, I'm not an expert on it, but I read a lot of expert commentary, looked at a lot of videos, looked at almost all, uh, the materials that have been sent to me and others over the last few days. So I'm really in the camp of the board needs to have some time during that, uh, work session or maybe even a subsequent work session, and they need to be face to face to outline the guidelines for a new recommendation. Uh, I really feel strongly about this. Uh, you know, we can expose another generation of kids to the whole language like we did 40 years ago. You know, it was nonsense then and it's nonsense now. The only thing that's changed is the, uh, the impact on student has changed. Uh, it's more severe now because if you're just going to guess at words and not know the meaning, if you're going to need pictures to find out what the words are. If, if you look at the essentials of the whole language, they, they might be okay for fictional reading, but they certainly don't lend themselves to technology, uh, uh, or any sort of, of high-tech reading or, or writing. So, you know, if you ask me, is this a hill you're prepared to die on? The answer is yes, absolutely yes. So then the question becomes for the whole, uh, language advocates, are they prepared to, to die on the hill of whole language? Uh, if so, uh, okay, we may need a whole new committee, top to bottom. Uh, I suspect there's a lot of, there's a number of people in that committee that are not died in the whole, whole work, whole language advocates. So, so, uh, I think this is the most important, uh, curriculum decisions we've probably made in the last 10 years. We instituted whole language once before. We blew it. It was a disaster. I can't imagine, well, I will not support unless, unless there's new information that comes that's totally different than what I've seen so far. I've seen no information, no research, not one item in which there's a convergence of, uh, uh, data that says whole language has any advantage at all. So, uh, that's where I'm at. I expect there to be a new recommendation. I expect there to be a new recommendation, not further, I, further information regarding the existing one. I don't know exactly how it fits into the total picture, so I'd like to understand that better. But in terms of ever supporting a elementary reading program that has a basis of whole language, uh, I'm very, very far from that.
Well, if, if I may, um, just take the liberty of saying, I do not want to, I would like for us to have the grace of letting the committee present what they've done for us before we ask for a new proposal. And I would like the, the grace, I guess, for myself to understand, uh, to use the word whole language and what that means. I don't, I don't know if all of us are on the same page of even understanding what that means. And so before I can make any kind of assessment regarding that, I would really like to have more information presented to me. And I agree with you, I don't want it to be glitzy and glossy. I want it to be, I want the detail, I want to understand because I'm not a literacy expert either. Um, but I really feel like we need to, as a board, and as you said, I agree with you, we need to be face-to-face. But I need a little bit, you're using, you're using vernacular that I'm, quite frankly, I don't even know what that. And so if I can ask for all of us as board members to, I, I, I really do think we need to sit down and talk about this for sure and we have a session, I know Pam's working on that, but that we talk about what that session looks like and bef, and whether or not it's a new recommendation or, or what that is, I can't say yet.
And that's, and that's the missing, I agree. And that's the missing piece for me is what are the specific elements, you know, the ones I don't like of whole language? How are they being applied or even if they're being applied?
Okay.
Although if they're not, why would we buy it, but.
Lyle, well, can I, can I jump in here? So I just, I, I, I hear you. I want to make sure that I am very clear. I don't, I, I'm, I'm quite shocked about that that announcement would come right now without an opportunity for the board workshop. So I, I, I find that dismissive of, of what's going on. And so the, the people who came with this recommendation were, worked on it for two years and that doesn't make it right, but it does, it does mandate the courtesy of giving them an opportunity to share their story and the research. So the fact that, and I know you did some research over the weekend, but I'm going to assume that people who have been, who, who do this may have some things that you don't know. And so I'm gonna request that we don't, that you hold off on making any recommendation to tell them that they have to start over. I find that dismissive and inappropriate. So I just, I want to weigh in on that. I don't think that's fair for, for that statement to be made without hearing all of it and to hear just from a few people and that recommendation does, does not seem right. And I just can't end this board meeting without weighing in on that.
And this is Sue, I would agree too that I think you can stand as an individual, Lyle, and, and I applaud that. But I think that we all have a right to our opinion and we have a right to our research and we have a right to what we feel works. And we can listen to the people that did an intense study on it and give them the respect of that before we tell them it's wrong.
But I think that was the whole reason that we did not want to vote on this tonight was because.
We did not, yeah.
Right, because it was like, like, um, Jane said, it was a three days then for us to try to get up to speed on it. And I didn't know what half of the stuff meant. So it does make sense to take time off and, and learn it all. And, and I'm not being dismissive of what they did. I want to hear it. I want to hear everything. Going, doing it over Easter weekend just wasn't, it wasn't gonna work.
And, and that's fine, that, all of that is fine. I'm just requesting that before we start making wild recommendations, I strongly believe that we, we need to let the process work. There is board policy that mandates how we go about that. So let us share that information and then we can go forward with that. That's all I'm asking, that we give an opportunity to follow board policy.
And one question that I had with this, and just this might dovetail into lots of different things, but as far as with the shutdown and businesses not operating as a normal function, when we order things, is there gonna be delay in receipt of? And, um, just with lots of things that we are now in the process of, you know, ordering for next year and, you know, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that if there's a large lead time that is necessary and not saying on this, and that's not imperative in this, but just to know that, um, there may be delays in receiving things that we order.
Yeah, that's, that's a good statement. We, what I would say is I don't want to order things quickly just because it may delay our timeline. I do want to make sure the board has the information that they need. I did ask that question today and so they, we have a group that's just checking on, asking questions like how, um, if we order by May one, if we order by May fifteenth, what's the turnaround time? So we will have that information. Um, as you know, I sent out some, uh, questions and answers on Sunday. And then I think since that time, I've gotten six more questions. So I'm just putting those in there and I will, and one of those questions was, what, what's the, the turnaround time for ordering? So that is on there and we will get those answers. I should be able to send out those, the new, um, the new question and answer with those six additional questions answered, uh, probably by tomorrow. We're real close on this.
Perfect, thank you. And thank you, Jane, for working on Easter.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's our job. I mean, we want you to feel more comfortable. We want you to do that and that's why we want you to make an informed decision. So that's, that's what we're working to do.
Thank you all. And I would just reiterate, Sue, I don't think it's, I agree with you on the timeframe there, but I don't think this would be the first time that we have started the school year at, without, without materials at times where we've been waiting on a, a purchase to come, et cetera, that it wasn't for COVID reasons, but it has happened before, so.
We've got the existing materials, don't we?
Pardon me?
We've got the existing materials.
Absolutely, absolutely. We have phonics materials. We have, right now for the, the two parts that we're using, the Really Great Reading and the Great Habit, or Good Habits, Great Readers, both of those pieces are existing. So the one that we were, the, the, all of the phonics stuff, that was just purchased recently, so we will continue with all of that. The only thing that we were asking to replace was the, the one piece of it that because that curriculum was not adopted, it's, it's twelve years old, so we were looking for new materials there. But we can, there's nothing wrong with starting the year with that. The only disadvantage that you get is a lot of times we will do professional development over the summer with those materials. So that, that opportunity would be lost, but that doesn't mean we can't do it extended days. I mean, we've got all kinds of options that we could use. So yeah, I don't think that that's, it may not be our first preference, but it's certainly workable.
Well, and wouldn't the company provide you with like sample materials if you did want to try to train over it, over the summer? If that's, if it hasn't come in, if that is what we decide to go with?
Yeah, it's certain, well, regardless of what we go with it, it's always an option to get materials. A lot of times people will like their own materials, but again, it's, it's workable. We've, we've done mid-year launches before and so we can, we can gear up for that. My only point of even addressing this now was just, I just didn't want to, to start making recommendations today without working the process that is a school board policy.
Right. And, and on that note, Jane, I'm just gonna, if this is all right, I am going to, um, you know, curtail this discussion in that we pulled this off of our agenda this evening. I feel a little bit, um, I just feel like we need to stop the discussion about it until we've had the work session and had the presentation and had some sort of recommendation, which we don't have any of that. And so I don't want there to be any perception of making decisions tonight. Um, does that make sense?
Look on the side.
Yes, and I would also reiterate that, um, with Pam trying to set this up and getting us all there, the importance of this and the importance of attendance at this, um, work session.
Absolutely. You're here, Jane. You're here, Sue, thank you. So, good discussion, I don't want to cut it off. I just also want it to be in the right parameters, so. Um, Lyle, I, I, I did cut you off though, I interrupted you. Are you finished? Did you have anything further this evening?
I guess I am.
Now that, now that I bit your head off, no, I'm kidding. So, all right, um, is there anything further to come before the board? I have no report this evening. Um, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move, Sue.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse. Um, I don't think we need to roll call this. I'm guessing we're all all right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Be well, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I will be in touch to, with some, uh, dates for a board work session.
Thank you, Pam.
Perfect, thank you.